Okay, good evening. We're going to go and get started. We're going to call the Castle Hills City Council regular meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. We are Mr. Mr. Gregory who should be here shortly, but we have enough to proceed. We will start with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Wagner, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Captain. First up, we're going to skip to item number two. Recognition of Angela DePaolo with Legends. But she's a Vice President of Pharmacy Operations with Legends Pharmacy. As many of y'all know, we were able to offer the COVID vaccine to our residents directly at home and here at the city. We went directly to their houses because some of our residents were not as mobile as others and we really relied on Legends to step up and offer us that vaccine and the service and Dr. DePaolo was there on the front lines with us, lugging around everything that she needed to administer. Grateful to have Legends in Castle Hills for their particular style of home service and grateful that Dr. DePaolo chose to come to San Antonio from New Mexico. I think we can all say thank you so much for everything that you've done for our city and making sure that we are protected from COVID-19. It says here that you have two boys, a 16-year-old. I think there's a mistake here. It says you have a 27-year-old. Okay, well, I, I think it's a mistake, but if you say it's true, I'll believe you. I did want to present you and Legends with this small plaque and as a token of appreciation for your service. Just so y'all know, I called her the Castle Hill Shiro. Because in my heart and to our residents, she is. Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation for a former council member from the city of Castle Hills. Councilwoman Helen Glass. She served the city of Castle Hills for 16 years, which is eight terms. Having served for only a couple of terms, I have the utmost respect for somebody that could serve for 16 years. I think we can all say thank you so much to Ms. Glass for her service. I understand that architecture was important to her and grateful that the house that she built will be able to live on as testament to her and what she did for this community. And thank you to her family for being here. On behalf of the city, we'd like to present you with a small memento which pales a comparison to the 16 years, but please take this from the city of Castle Hills as remembrance for Ms. Glass who passed away in January. Next up, we have a promotional announcement of the new corporal and sergeant for the Castle Hills Police Department.
Mayor, we're gonna have to do that in the July meeting.
Okay, not a problem. I'm assuming we're gonna skip the introduction of the deputy clerk clerk as well?
Yes, we'll do that in July. Thank you.
Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody like to speak? Okay, we will proceed into number five, the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consented agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Discussion?
We have a motion on the table.
You can have discussion.
Okay, so.
I would just like the city secretary, there is nowhere in the minutes to say why Mr. Isbrand and I voted no. I would like you to go back in the minutes and put down the arguments of why we voted no in the record. This is for item number 6.10, now on the bottom of page four of six and the top of page five of six. That's my only request.
Okay, with that being said, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. For the first order of business, I'm going to move it around a little bit and we will go to 6.6, update and discussion on policy procedures and certain, I'm sorry, hold on, let me see. I'm sorry, 6.8, discussion and possible action ordinance 2021-06-08A, amending the city's FY21 budget to provide funds in public works to create the administrative assistant position until December 31st, 2021 to ensure essential city services for the city of Castle Hills and assist with administrative services in the Public Works Office and setting an effective date. Mr. Rapley.
Yes, Mayor. I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna do the power, uh, Public Works presentation first, but this item is a request. Actually, Councilman Paul had asked me to look in the feasibility of putting this position back into the Public Works Department. Last year, we had an idea of trying to put it back in the budget, but we were obviously a little unsure because we had a very tight budget. Obviously, the COVID impact revenue. So it made sense to kind of evaluate this in this year's budget. However, Mr. Harada needs assistance from administrative standpoint, which he had that position for about five years. In 2018, the council decided to remove that position. Mr. Paul had reached out to me, asking me to look at the feasibility of putting this position back into the budget this year for four months. So that would start September 1st at least. So what I would be doing is obviously advertising for the position and under with Mr. Harada's assistance, advertising the position and then working to find someone to assist him from an administrative standpoint. So I wanted to make sure, I know Mr. Paul again had requested to look into the feasibility of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Mr. Paul, comment?
Mr. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I feel this is one of the travesties to our city that was committed back in June.
Can we make a motion first before we go into discussion?
Sure, Mr. Gregory. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we adopt ordinance 2021-06-08A as stated.
Second.
First and a second by Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul, I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's all right, that's all right. Proper process. June of 2018, when two new council people came onboard with the assistance of a council person that got reelected that was onboard, three to two council decide to wax some positions without even knowing truly what the positions presented. Now, let's move forward. What we have is a Public Works Department that has been the glowing center in our city for years. Since we've lost personnel, we lost a personnel over in Public Works. So what do we have? We have a Public Works manager who drives the trucks, changes oils, out in the field all day, doing whatever it takes to get the job done for our citizens. And we pull away a clerk that helps him with the paperwork administrative. I cannot tell you how many times I have gone by that office on Sunday afternoon and who's in there working, trying to clean up paperwork from stuff that he's had all week long he's been dealing with. And I think it's a travesty of justice that we did that at that time and it's time that we correct that. We have an issue where we have now the people who love Public Works, now you, in the past three or four months, we've been hearing murmurs about we can't ever get a hold of Public Works. Nobody's there. I call, nobody answers. Nothing happens. Guess what? The men are in the field working and he has no help. And it's time that if we're gonna provide for our citizens the way they expect us to provide, we need to give them the tools to do the job and I'm just tired of putting it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory.
I want to, council ought to understand that they're creating a post that's gonna cost $60,000 on an annualized basis for a clerk's position, plus insurance, plus retirement. The, it's a little misleading to say it's only gonna cost 15,000 for more months, but it's $60,000 a year job we're thinking about creating. Second, the, we had the person who was there come before the council and say to the council, basically, the only thing she was doing is sitting before a computer and changing numbers around when it came to be regarding what roads, how, what condition the roads were in. The clerk that you were trying to have a $60,000 a year job for is not going to be out digging ditches. We have, Italy, I think it's two vacant positions already that have yet to be filled. They should be filled. And I think it's, I think it is ill-advised at this time to create a $60,000 a year position minimally, plus insurance and vacation, et cetera. When I think the most important thing to do is to fill the two positions that are vacant already in the budget accounted for. So Mr. Harada doesn't have to go out and do all the things he's doing. Those are the things that need to be filled. Not to have an assistant who's not going to be going out and doing any of these things at all, at least at this time.
Can I respond?
Mr. Mr. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, it's not a $60,000 position. Secondly, I think Mr. Gregory, who happened to be one of the three who decided to eliminate a lot of positions, also would not let us add back the two people that we needed that we were short to help with trash. Mr. Gregory seems to, I asked at the time, I asked council, has anyone on council gone over and looked at the work that he has to do and get done? Not one of them raised their hand. Not one of them been over there to do that. And I'm sorry, I just disagree and I think Mr. Gregory is very short-sighted in this. And we need, if we're gonna provide and for our people and provide what's necessary, we need to put a clerk in that position and that clerk did a whole lot more than put numbers on the street. I'm afraid Mr. Gregory was wrong and doesn't remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Isbrand.
Members, I would just say that I believe it's time for us to look forward, not backward. Can't change anything that happened in 2018 and/or the reason that it took place. But we all know every day the demands and expectations that the residents of this community have on us. And I feel very comfortable in saying and attempting to speak for all of us and saying, I bet the number one issue we hear right now about is Public Works responsiveness, ability to reach them, ability to serve the community in the professional way that we would expect this city to operate. We, we are not nearly at a threshold in the number of staff positions that the city has previously had, even if we add this position back in. So when you think about the, the budget analysis, if you will, I think it's important to look at, if you want to look back, where we were in number of positions a few years ago versus where we are now. But the simple reality is our responsibility, you know, is to, to be responsive to the needs of this community. And you cannot run a department, I don't believe, without the administrative support that it takes to make sure that people are paid on time, that the required, the necessary paperwork associated with environmental quality issues, et cetera, are taken care of. That when someone calls, they receive, they, a human being answers the phone. What's one of the criticisms we hear all the time? No one answers the phone. Well, of course not if nobody's there. Again, I would just appeal to us, it's time to look forward and think about what this city needs to continue to progress and to do so in a professional way and to deliver the caliber of services that we need, whether they be on an administrative level or be the feet in the field. We will hear at some point tonight about some of the challenges that Public Works has. Challenges that we will need to take into the next budget process and I think there'll be very significant conversations about those. But really, can we expect to run a professional organization when we have not equipped it to be able to do what it's supposed to do? I would encourage us to support this position.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May.
Mayor, could I mention that it's my understanding, Mr. Harada can speak to that, that back in 2013, when this position was created, he actually gave up a position in the budget to have this position carved in in 2013, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I think both Councilman Paul and Councilman Isbrand are correct. It is our responsibility to rectify prior ill-conceived decisions, but it's also important to move forward. I strongly support this ordinance. And Mr. Joyce, if you have no further comment, I'm gonna call the question.
Okay, we have a call to question by Mr. May. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. I'm standing with, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Against.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That was a call to the question that ends debate when it was adopted and now you need to vote on the main motion. That was not a vote on the motion, that was a, a motion to call the question.
Okay.
Rather than a, a motion to adopt the main motion. So that passes. Debate ends and now it's time for a vote on the main motion, which was to adopt the stated ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schnell. Okay, so back to the main ordinance. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to one. We're gonna start back at the beginning and go to item 6.1, update and discussion work related to the new comprehensive plan. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, we have representatives from LPA and LNV here to give a quick presentation and overview of their experience and how they will be helping and assisting in the development of the new comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir. Is it, this is the Public Works one.
First of all, it's nice to meet you all. My name is Federico Cavassos and I'm an associate with LPA. We were formerly known as OCO Architects. We have been in the community for, for 40 years. Our, our new building is located on South Florence and South Alamo, not too far from here. And really appreciate the opportunity to introduce our company and how we will be working with LNV, now known as Ardura in a, you know, proposed help for your comprehensive master plan. Just a bit about us, Byron and I will be your primary points of contact and it really is kind of the union of our two companies, the union of our two strengths that we believe will surround the city of Castle Hills with the resources to put together, to really take advantage of this opportunity. Because that's really the way that this should be viewed. This is an opportunity to, to shape, you know, the future of the city, to guide resources and to think about how to bring, you know, the city together even more than it is now. Just a bit about us, we do have six offices across Texas and California, an office in San Antonio, an office in Dallas and four in California. About 400 employees, about 30 locally. If I had to summarize, the way that we will work as a team is that we feel that our, our strongest strength is our ability to engage the community and our ability to actively listen and interpret what they are saying through, we'll go, we'll run through a few exhibits, through the development of exhibits, through the way that we have been trained to interact and deal with all kinds of people and all kinds of personality and not to form conclusions before we hear feedback. That's really the way that these kinds of processes work best, is when you bring people along with you, you know, problem solve together, instead of having a, a design or a plan happen to you, right? To, to build consensus and to, to really build, acknowledge the importance of stakeholders. We consider ourselves endlessly optimistic in the way that we work. Any setback, any negative feedback is just an opportunity to improve the plan, in this case, to improve the way that we work. And it's that feedback and the way that we approach engaging people, the way that we approach design, the way that we approach planning that we hope to bring to the city. And then we consider ourselves, you know, experts locally. We've been here for a long time. You'll see examples of the way that we have worked with all of the communities around us. And not yet Castle Hills, but we would love the opportunity. Some of the ways, we have many ways of engaging the community, but this is the first thing that you would feel if we were brought onboard, is our ability to use graphic and visual tools and interactive exhibits to build consensus and to extract information and feedback and thoughts and concerns and what people love about the city and what people wish was better about the city. You know, we, we pin up images of all kinds of buildings and ask, or spaces and streets. You know, what, what do you love about this? What do you not love about this? We'll, we'll walk through the city with people. They'll point out their favorite spots in the city. We'll talk, you know, we're open to going on walks with people through important corridors, Northwest Military Highway. We ask people to imagine a day in the life of a citizen who is not themselves. What does that look like? And this is all around building consensus and engaging the community, getting to know the community before any decisions are made. So just in brief, I understand this will be about 10 minutes, so I'll run through it. We have worked with the city of Alamo Heights, developing a master plan for their city hall. We were the architects onboard that helped make the funding and the reality of this plan happen. We were not the ultimate architects here. We were the planners that helped plan how to use this lot, right, east of Broadway, how to bring the police and the fire together, how to navigate, you know, abutting next to a, a very, you know, quiet residential neighborhood, how to leverage Broadway there. So there was a lot of urbanistic concerns around here that had to be taken into account, a lot of stakeholders. And we're just really proud of our work with the city of Alamo Heights. At Terrell Hills, we work with them on a municipal master plan. You've probably all driven by their city hall, police department, fire department. One other thing I just want to say intentionally, what's shown here is different graphical ways of exhibiting information. Each city, each client that we work with has a different way of interpreting information or understanding information. So we cater the way that we communicate to that community. So in this case, these hand sketches really resonated with the city of Terrell Hills and ultimately led to a really dynamic repurposing of their old fire station. A challenging site, challenging grade, a lot of, again, urbanistic concerns, a difficult geometry that also involved a lot of kind of stakeholder and community engagement. We're currently working with the city of Pleasanton. They've been a great client of ours for a while. They've got a great site on their river there. They see a lot of potential around how to activate a thoroughfare there, retail and dining, how to, you know, leverage the ability to have rodeos, the ability to park trailers. You know, this is ongoing. It's, it's, they've been a great partner for us and, you know, feel free to call them and ask about our services and how we're doing, but really enjoying that. If I can advance here. Our work, as I mentioned, is not only, and our expertise is not only limited to this community and this state. We have been working with many communities and counties and cities and municipalities in California. This is just a few of them. Orange County where our, our urban office is located. We worked with the city there on a master plan for about 12 city blocks in the center of their city, thinking positively about how to connect and unite green axes across the city. How to handle a, a number of really important busy thoroughfares, how to manage construction of those and while keeping the city kind of functioning. And this has led, you know, built a lot of great positive momentum for Orange County. The city of Vesalia, another small community, had a great greenfield. They had a great, you know, asset in this creek that was completely underutilized. So, you know, how do we build a community center around that? That's all about outdoor lifestyle. It's about bringing people together around an amphitheater. That's about acknowledging the importance of thoroughfares and how to activate them, especially when they abut, you know, green, greenways, many of, you know, similar concerns to the city of Castle Hills. At Moreno Valley, we helped them establish land use and planning guidelines. So a number of exhibits here are just quite frankly technical, but they help describe really important street sections about how to buffer buildings that are maybe not terribly attractive. Through the use of landscape, through the use of Birmingham, through the use of, you know, identifying which, you know, where do we need to put a little more energy into our streets, which ones need to go up to six lanes, which can kick down to two? And then how we communicate that information to the community. Okay, day one, you know, this is what that buffer will look like. You'll see small plants, small trees. Year, year six, come back. That's what that kind of landscaped streetscape would look like in the future. So these are just kind of examples, graphical examples of how we approach problems, how we solve problems, how we communicate ideas and how we engage the community. There are a number of other kinds of exhibits that we developed that we, you know, we want to work with you on this about how to define the importance of setting architectural guidelines within your city. We know there's obviously many existing buildings in Castle Hills, but for new construction, you know, how to identify important do's and don'ts that are consistent with the wonderful architecture you have in your city currently. And I believe that wraps up the presentation. Try to keep it to 10 minutes. Any questions?
Mr. Gregory.
Thank you. At the last meeting, the council appropriated $55,000 of your request of a hundred and some odd thousand dollars to do this project. If we do not come through with the entire amount of money that you want, how will that affect the project?
Are you referring to the 55,000 or the?
55,000 is what was approved, but what you were, what you were looking at was 121,000.
Right. And you used the word want there and I hope it's clear that it's just sort of based on the amount of time that we would like to invest in the city at that point. But basically, at that, that proposal, that original proposal had a municipal master plan and a feasibility study for this building and the adjacent properties as a part of that. So those services are not included in the most recent proposal. The focus is really on the big picture on the city of Castle Hills and not directly on this piece of property, this building and, and how to handle these facilities. So it was a, you know, a folk, a focus of services is what I would say. And the 55,000 is sufficient to cover that.
I have another, I listened to your remarks very carefully because I used to live in Alamo Heights. You mentioned that you helped Alamo Heights with the funding problem of this. How did you do that?
Well, I would say that we helped them with making the reality of the plan happen. We, we worked with the city to develop the plan for that property so that it could be approved, right? And through the course of that, we established how big the building needed to be, established target cost per square foot for that building to help shape a realistic a realistic pant, plan and path forward for that particular municipal facility. Now that is a more focused scope of work than the comprehensive plan that we're talking about is. That's really at, like, that particular piece of it was at a facility level, whereas what we're talking about here is, is definitely a bigger scale and about, you know, the direction of important urban corridors, greenways, zoning, et cetera.
If you don't know what the city has that it can spend, how can you go ahead with your plans?
The best way to work together is to understand where you're coming from, is to understand what your outlook is, your financial outlook is. So we would hope to be as transparent as we could, working with you, understanding, you know, real, understanding and establishing realistic expectations for what the city can take on, right? The last thing we want to do is set expectations that can't be met, city feels burned, you know, because we, you know, promising, you know, a, a dream that is, is, is not, you know, fiscally feasible with the city. So those are important discussions to have up front, and we would like to have them with you, you know. Where's your head at? What are you thinking about fiscally, economically for this plan? That'll allow us to focus our energy right from the onset of the plan. So that, I mean, that would be the approach.
Well, I noticed you mentioned a community center, which was, the chairman of this committee was a former council member who wanted to build a, buy a garage and turn it into a million dollar plus community center, and, and that was soundly defeated in, when she came up for reelection. No one at that time thought that was a reasonable idea. Is that type of, is that type of idea going to be incorporated in this plan that you're going to give back to us at some time in the future?
It's too soon to say what ideas are presented, because our role is to listen, to interpret, and to present what we're hearing from the community and from you, and to balance all of those things. So, so to say there's no, there's no agenda here to propose or use the city funds in some way, that would be counterintuitive to the way that we work. You know, the way that we work is about listening first to what people have to say, and really, you know, we're here to enable what's important to the city, not what's important to us, right?
Thank you.
Mr. May?
I have a question about some of your prior projects. Castle Hills is landlocked. We're surrounded by San Antonio. We've had reach out from Bear County in general. Have the, what are the depths of your experience in prior projects, bringing in a collaborative, working with both the county and the city of San Antonio?
Well, we have been working with Bear County for a while, so, you know, Dan Curry is someone that we work with quite a bit, more on the facilities end. I guess if I could ask a clarifying question, when you say working with a third party, are you referring to working on this plan in conjunction with Bear County?
That's precisely what I'm getting at. So I'm just trying to find out what kind of experience you've had, or if there've been projects that you've worked on that involve like a three-party agreement or plan?
I would say, yes, the city of Vesalia was the combination of a developer, the city, and, you know, LPA. So that would be the third party in that case, if that's what you mean by three parties. So it's not an uncommon way to work. I guess we're the kind of firm that embraces having more stakeholders and more views, because we just think it informs plans, you know. The more people we can hear from, the, the better we can build consensus. So if there's any suggestion that there's a fear or hesitation about working with a third party, there certainly isn't. We would embrace that.
Mr. Esbrun?
Mr. Joyce?
I'll move that we approve the twenty-five thousand dollars for the, from the seed fund to add on to the thirty thousand dollars already approved.
Go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Joyce, I'm, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the room. This is not the agenda item to do that.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
This is a discussion on the comprehensive plan, and that, any kind of motion like that would be the next agenda item.
Okay, well, let me say something else then. In the course of conversation, the discussion of the municipal master plan here, and the study of this building was brought up, and when council last month took that thirty thousand dollars from the seed, that was sacrificed in order to do this master plan. So what the committee has committed to doing is with our own internal talent, and we have three or four architects on board, we will do that internally. We will take the place of, we will take that effort and do it ourselves internally, the master plan and a study of this building, at least functionally. We don't have engineers. We can't study the systems and all of that. But the committee would like to take on the task of doing the study itself. And Mr. Smiley Kalif has offered to take care of whatever costs might be involved in getting some graphics developed from that study. And then we can do sketches and stuff, but we don't have the ability to do nice graphics. So Mr. Smiley Kalif will take, excuse me, take care of that.
Mr. Gregory?
I just want to clarify what you said. You, you said fifty-five thousand dollars was sufficient for what you wanted to do.
The scope of services is, is, we, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, but it clearly outlines the number of exhibits, number of community engagements that we would propose, and it's, it's almost exactly the original scope that we proposed for the comprehensive plan a few months ago, I guess that was. Yeah.
I noticed you're hiring sixteen people to do this job.
Oh, yeah.
Remarkable.
What? Oh, I thought you were joking. No, we're not.
No, well, according to this list, there are sixteen people. They're going to be doing this when you go, look in the next section. I counted them.
Mr. Cavassos, I think Mr. Gregory's referencing at the end, that they have the catch-all for all the billable.
That's right, billable hours.
Rates. It's not necessarily every single one of those person that's working. That's standard protocol for a construction document like this. Mr. Gregory?
Oh, we're just trying to be, just to be clear about that. Yeah, those are the hourly billing rates that we have for our, our different professional service levels. So it's, it's a common practice in the event that additional services are requested, and an hourly rate is previously established.
So instead of three designers, you may only have one. Instead of two design coordinators, you may only have one.
That, yeah, that's not at all a staffing chart. It's not a proposal of who will be working on the project. That would be, that would be not appropriate to have that, you know, that many people servicing you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cavassos, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll proceed on to item six point two, discussion and possible action on authorizing the expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars from the seed fund to cover professional services, costs related to the development of the new comprehensive plan. We have two people signed up to speak, Ms. Baker. Okay, and we have Ms. McLenn. Ms. McLenn, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right. First, my apologies for not being there in person tonight. I have three Zoom meetings between six-thirty and seven-fifteen, so being in one spot with three computers has allowed me to sort of manage all three. Second of all, thank you very much for allocating money towards this project last month, and, and first off, reallocating the thirty thousand from the seed fund for professional assistance. As you heard from Federico on the last agenda item, he has a really good handle on the uniqueness of Castle Hills and how to help us plan for the next five, ten, fifteen years and beyond. Tonight, CPAC is asking that you make the budget adjustment to reallocate twenty-five thousand dollars from the seed fund to allow us to get through basically that fifty-five thousand that we talked about last month. The committee is committed, as Mr. Joyce said, or Alderman Joyce said, we are committed to raising funds and/or providing the manpower to make up the, the items on the proposal that we will not be able to afford to pay LNV and LPA to do for us. It occurred to me while I was preparing just a few comments for tonight that I needed to thank you as a council for being forward-sighted when it comes to the use of certificates of obligation and to fund street and drainage, because we have an opportunity to harness and leverage the money in our seed fund if we are forward-thinking right now. Imagine if we had actually decided to use certificates of obligation a little bit sooner, like before we spent the one point three million dollars on Antler and the million plus on the First Banyan project. What we have right now is an opportunity to create a situation where we can leverage the money that we had left in our seed fund. With a comprehensive plan, we will have the basis and the documents that we need to be able to go after grant money, money that would allow us to use the seed money over and over again to fund different projects. We can fund infrastructure. We can fund parks. We can fund walking. We can fund walking projects. We can fund public safety and all sorts of other projects that council or Parks Commission or, you know, whoever can dream up. By having that extra money, it will help us, by having the full fifty-five thousand plus the assets or the resources that the committee have, have pledged towards this project, we will have a much better product at the end that will help us with backup and information that we can use to apply for grants from Alamo area, Alamo area MPO, which is mobility projects. That's walking, biking, vehicle access. It could be traffic control. It can be all kinds of things. The Texas Parks and Wildlife, which helps fund local parks and recreational trails, and some of that is up to eighty percent matching money. AARP has grants where if you have projects that will help older citizens or will benefit older citizens, you have money. They will help provide grants to help you with those projects. Among numerous other grant programs that are out there waiting for us to just look for them, it would give us the opportunity to leverage the money we have. Sometimes they will require that you have the money for a project and then you're reimbursed. So it could be a constant, you know, replacement of some or all of the money that we use for the project. A lot of times, you know, it would just be a great way to leverage the money we have and make it last longer without nickel and diming the, the fund anymore. This will be a tool that is based on citizen input, that can be used by council, the Board of Adjustments, ARC, zoning, and the Parks Commission when you are prioritizing spending and making decisions. As Federico mentioned, the comprehensive plan can address zoning issues and tree issues and things that come up in front of our, our commissions and committees all the time, and they will have a tool that they can use, and you will have a tool as a council that you can use. So thank you for consideration of the reallocation of the X, the twenty-five thousand to fund the full fifty-five. We, as, as the chairman of CPAC, I really appreciate council's, council's consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Mr. Rapley?
Are you referring to, are in the agenda for the seed? Okay. We will have to do a budget amendment, obviously, to reprogram the thirty thousand, but this would be council approving an additional twenty-five thousand out of the seed for the cost of, of these services. The, in the back of the packet is the itemized list of the tasks and the breakdown of those costs that is no more than fifty-five thousand. But again, the process would be us bringing forward a budget amendment, reprogram those dollars, and then again carve out the twenty-five thousand, the seed, based on council's approval for a total of fifty-five thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have a motion? I'm Mr. Joyce.
I'll move that we authorize the expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars from the seed fund to cover the professional services cost for the development of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Second, I'm Mr. May. Discussion. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Rapley, what is reprogramming money?
Well, essentially, as I mentioned the last council meeting, the line item in the seed had engineering dollars. Those engineering dollars, again, for, were for the master plan to study this building. To be transparent, again, the budget amendment would be to basically, it would be a same line item of engineering, but for council to approve the dollars to be used for this instead of that particular service. That's all. I mean, there's thirty thousand already in the seed budget dedicated to engineering. So it's just to be transparent, so we know what was used in the seed fund at this particular time moving forward. Again, there wasn't twenty-five thousand, so that's why we have to carve out another twenty-five thousand, and a budget amendment is required here.
Well, I voted against it the last time. I plan to vote against it this time, but Mrs. McLenn, though she's gone, has an interesting proposal that I'd like to know more about. I've, I don't know exactly what she's talking about when she talks about leveraging her money out of the seed fund. I want to know more about that. If that is, if that's a possibility, I want to know more about it.
I think she may be referring to councilmen, and, and when cities go out for grants, sometime there may be an eighty-twenty split. So typically, cities have to pick up twenty percent of that cost of that grant. So I think what she's referring to is to pay for twenty percent of the seed dollars that are in there to support that grant if we apply and approve somewhere.
Well, I mean, I want to, I do want to find out about that, because it's, it's interesting, but she, she also implied that we can put that money back in there, you know. She, it may be a very good idea. I don't know, but I'd like more to come down the line next year when we're looking at things, but. I think that, so we're taking twenty-five thousand out of, we're taking thirty thousand out of seed, and Ms. McLenn talked about twenty-five out of seed. You're talking about thirty thousand out of seed. Which is it?
Again, there's thirty, thirty thousand programmed in to the adopted budget out of the seed for engineering services. This would be an additional twenty-five thousand out.
Okay.
So in the previous year, we had programmed thirty thousand in that was not utilized.
Mr. Rapley, at our last meeting, we authorized the thirty thousand, which was already allocated, and then this meeting, we were going to approve the.
Additional twenty-five.
Additional twenty-five.
But again, we'll come back in the form of a budget amendment to make that clear. And again, to answer your question, councilman, to be transparent, to know exactly what particularly that engineering services was going to be for in the seed, because we had already programmed in thirty thousand.
Mr. Esbrun?
Members, I just mentioned that in, at our last meeting, my objection to this was not about the plan itself. I think it's a marvelous plan and something that will do wonders for our city. My objection was around the, the timing of the financial output, if you will, as, just as we go into a budget session. I think since then, in the past month, we've seen some creative thinking brought to the table, both in terms of working with our partners, the discussion that Ms. McLenn had tonight about, I was very pleased to hear the discussion of the grants, and that we see some more innovative thinking that I think takes into account our concerns about the, the financial constraints that we have. So I, I would, I am in support, I will support this tonight, because again, I support the project, and I think that there is clearly a demonstration being made of efforts to address the financial part of it, and the fact that the original bid that was given to us, that is now down to fifty-five with the statement that what needs to be accomplished can be accomplished for that, is a very reasonable middle ground for us to reach. And I would certainly in no way want to be perceived as an obstacle to the will of this council, and the council last month said that it indeed wanted to proceed forward with funding it, and it will have my support for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Esbrun. Mr. Cavassos, I did have one quick question for you. Given that this is something that you do day in and day out, I too agree with my councilmember colleague, Mr. Gregory, that we would like to leverage and utilize any kind of programs that exist. I'm assuming that you probably have a better grasp for programs that exist that we could apply for as a city.
Certainly. We can help connect you to the grants that we're seeing other municipalities apply for. We helped actually, not, not immediately here, but the city of Eagle Pass secure grant funding just a few months ago, a federal grant. So we'd be happy to connect you with those kinds of resources.
And that's something that y'all typically do, right?
It's very common. It's a very great way to illustrate a partnership, and it helps, you know, make plans become reality. So.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Council, I think this is an opportunity for us to get a clear vision for where we want to go as a city. I think there's a lot of ideas that float around anytime we talk to our resident or we're talking to business. we're talking to business owners, but at the end of the day, we don't know how to get to where we're going if we don't know where we're going. And I think bringing in professionals that can help craft that vision, it can save us a lot of time, money and, uh, heartache to some extent. Uh, I feel like a lot of what we've done around the city of Castle Hills has been doing the best that we can with the best that we have. And I think it's time for us to work smarter and engage the professionals to help us where they can, especially when we have a great group of, uh, individuals on the committee side that are willing to volunteer so much. Uh, I think between the two, it's, uh, the best of both worlds. Mr. Gregory.
I, I appreciate what you said. I don't want to be obstructionist, but I am moving from against it to I will not vote for it, but I will abstain.
Okay. With that being said, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. Uh, Mr. Gregory's abstaining. We will proceed on to item 6.3, public hearing on an amendment to section 50 dash 519 of the zoning ordinance to add a provision limiting the number of short-term rentals permits on one street.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Paul.
Uh, as discussed, I have to move on to my assignment. Okay?
Okay. Thank you so much for joining, Mr. Paul.
Sorry, I have to leave early. Thank you.
It is, uh, 7:22 and we're going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Okay, it is 7:22 and we will close the public hearing and proceed on to item 6.4, discussion and possible action on an amendment to section 5, 50 dash 519 of the zoning court of ordinances to add a provision limiting the number of short-term rental permits on one street. And we have, uh, Mr. Solis has joined us today. Chairman, chairman, welcome.
Good to see you all. Um, this was something that came before our zoning commission and we were able to review. Uh, what we were looking at was the fact that we understand as the evolution of all cities, uh, short-term rentals, Airbnbs are now being pretty popular in the area. Uh, our concern was how do we space them? How do we ensure that we don't have a proliferation of them all over the city? Uh, so this, we first started with saying that one every eighth house, now we moved it out to one and 13. Um, so the spacing is, is important for us. We felt that it was a good opportunity for us to be proactive on this issue, uh, so the city of Castle Hills can continue to grow. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Yes, sir.
Have other cities come to this ratio of 1/13th?
No, sir. They're actually smaller, 1/8, um, some of the other cities. So we decided to grow it a little larger. Yeah, City of San Antonio is 1/8. So if you think about it, for reference to our area, um, let's take my street of Castle, of Townview, if you have one every eighth house, then the possibility exists that maybe three or four could exist there. If you do 1/13th, it reduces to two.
So does this mean on a short street that only has 10 houses, they can have one? If a street has a long street, they can have four or five. Can they all be bunched together or have they got to be spread apart?
You know, what we're talking about is, good question. Uh, Mr. Schnell, how would you interpret that, Mark?
I'm, I'm looking for the, the wording in the ordinance, Mr. Solis.
Get out, I need him.
Cause I can see somebody coming in and renting four or five houses and.
Yeah. My assumption was no, that it would be 13 away from somebody else. So.
That'll have to be in the ordinance.
That's what the wording does. And while we wait for that, I do have medals for you guys from the, the great bank called Truist. I'll give you the second. Your official gift of medals from Truist Bank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solis.
While you're enjoying your medals, um, the wording in the ordinance is that if adopted, if the ordinance that was presented and is consistent with the zoning commission's recommendation, if it's adopted, it says that the total number of short-term rental properties in the A single family district and the B duplex district is limited to no more than 1/13th of the total number of single family and duplex units on a single street. That does not mean one every 13. That means a total of one for every 13 properties. So i- if the street had 26, um, uh, single family and duplex units, then there could be two short-term rentals. They could be next door to each other.
That is correct. So with the clarification, a councilman, yes, they can be together. That's what the zoning commission is recommending. Obviously you can amend it accordingly, uh, but this is the recommendation was that we would go to 1/13th. Uh, as you heard our city attorney, it does not preclude people being next to each other.
Does this satisfy you that you can bunch them together?
Again, we were looking at, at the, at the, because if you look at a street that has 30 houses, uh, it's going to be two no matter what. Now, whether together or not is irrelevant to us. What was it was reducing it overall.
Thank you.
Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to see you and I'll compliment you on your inadvertent UTSA colors tonight.
Yeah, no, not a problem. The dapper, the dapper council member, yes, sir.
Uh, I'm, I'm curious to know, and I apologize that I was unable to watch the zoning commission meeting at which this came up. Did you hear from, um, owners of, uh, properties who want to use them for short, short-term rentals? Did you receive any kind of feedback on this?
We received minimal feedback, uh, of anybody coming forward with that. We were just being proactive with the idea that was brought forth. Um, and, and that's another reason why we chose the way we did in terms of increasing the number, uh, of those eligible, right? So to the point that was made earlier, if it is 26 on the street, uh, it's really determined by the size of the street that you live on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Solis, was there any consideration to, um, in San Antonio, the way their ordinance is written, you are exempt from that requirement if your owner occupied. Was there any consideration to that for us, Castle Hills?
That seems a conflict. If their owner occupied, that means they were there.
So if there's a ADU, um, then they could live in, they could live in the main house and rent out the back one.
Uh, we did not take that caveat into consideration, sir.
Okay. I was just curious and just to be clear.
But that goes back to the habitable things that we passed a month ago.
Right, right, right. Um, and just to be clear, this is something that I had asked the city manager to look into. Uh, somebody here reached out to me and said, well, I hear the Castle Hills is difficult to have Airbnbs, which I said, no, we're not. Um, but the intent was somebody was looking to buy several houses in the city to set them up as Airbnb and I felt like there's potential, like it happened in San Antonio, for that to become, uh, take away from the community aspect. When you have people that don't actually live in a house, it's essentially a revolving door and it's hard to develop the tight knit relationships that we have here in the city of Castle Hills.
As it is, you know, you see the problem with rental properties in the first place, this makes it worse. If, if given with the wrong personnel, the wrong management team, uh, to manage the Airbnb, from our perspective, uh, we are centrally located. Our city is in perfect location for somebody who wants to visit, uh, to be able to do, uh, whether they go to the rim in 20 minutes or they're going all the way to the missions of the, on this in 20 minutes to the south. So it's amenable for somebody who's maybe thinking along the lines of creating that type of opportunity for themselves. Um, we just wanted to make sure that we remember the city first, uh, and not necessarily their profit margins. Yes, sir.
One, what about people who already are renting out their house and Airbnb? How do you, who goes first? If somebody comes.
That's, uh, that one hasn't been determined. I would imagine with the registration process, uh, that we will be coming back. Is that, that's a heck of a question, because I thought the same thing. It was like, you know, if JR gets his business and he gets his house, he basically blocks out everybody else around him from getting it. Uh, it's, it's basically that on the first come, first served and the registration.
Correct. Um, Mr. Schnell could probably elaborate. He's familiar with how San Antonio does it, but, um, that would probably be the case. Um, I think right now we've only had a few applications so far for a short-term rental.
How does San Antonio do it?
So they go on a registration basis?
Correct.
Uh, and once you're in, you're, you're the designated person and, um, it's my understanding it doesn't transfer with sale. Mr. Schnell?
Um, I, I think the expression that Chairman Solis used, first come, first serve is correct. Um, and, and I believe the mayor is correct about San Antonio's process that, that, in, in, in fact, I'm aware that there were people who were watching for the final adoption of the San Antonio ordinance and took action immediately to file so they would, um, be first on their block, um, and not be shut out. Um, this ordinance provides at the end of section one, that an application for a short-term rental permit will be denied if granting the permit would violate the provision. So if there is an existing, uh, short-term rental, um, that the city is aware of with registration, then, um, someone else would not be able to get a second short-term rental if it would violate the ordinance of more than one, um, per 13.
Would that help you, councilman? I believe that enters your question correctly.
As of today?
As of passage, correct.
Well, that'll, that'll help a lot of, because there are people I know who, who rent out for this and.
Absolutely. They basically do not realize with the passage of this, they basically locked up their area. Uh, and depending on what other areas they have, I mean, depending where the house was located, how many other, again, going by the size of the street. And so it's simple mathematics.
Can you sublease your Airbnb?
Um, that's a different question. Um, that's not what we were talking about. So I would think that's the ordinance itself, um, on the Airbnb ordinance that we're talking about, so I think not.
I don't, I don't think so in the way that was written for the short-term rental ordinance.
Is the grandfathering in this ordinance or not? I guess it is.
Well, what just, what our attorney just mentioned, you can in essence say it's grandfathered because they have first right if they're already operating and have successfully gotten the permit to, to operate today. If another person comes in, they're going to be applicable to the 13 with their street. So depending on the street, they can be right next to it, just as we established earlier. However, if the street is less than 12, no, they're blocked out.
So it's the legislative attempt, uh, it's the legislative will, if we pass this, that people in Castle Hills who are doing this, uh, basically have the first right to have an, an Airbnb on the street.
The intent was never about who was already present. The intent was be able to space them out to avoid an Oklahoma land rush of people coming over and creating Airbnbs all over the city of Castle Hills. That is the intent, not the other.
Mr. Rapley. Mr. Schnell?
Um, just for clarification, um, uh, my position and my statement was that if there was already an Airbnb registered with the city, so, so someone who's operating an air, and, and an Airbnb or a short-term rental property now, but has not registered it in compliance with the city ordinance is not protected. It's only a party who has already registered and is in compliance with our ordinance who would be protected in, in a sense grandfathered. So if there were two Airbnbs or two short-term rentals, three houses away from each other on a street with 12 lots, um, they could continue to exist as long as they're both registered. If only one of those is registered, when the other one comes in to seek registration, they're going to be told, no, thank you, if this ordinance is adopted as presented. Um, so there's just, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that just because they're operating doesn't mean they're grandfathered if they're not operating consistent and in compliance with our ordinance. I, I don't know how many people have, have, uh, completed that registration process. Mr. Rapley may know, um, but it's, it, it, when first come, first served means first to comply and get registered.
Is it in perpetuity? You register, that's it forever? Or have you got to do?
There's an annual renewal requirement, if I recall correctly, Mr. Gregory.
What, what, what?
It does not carry over.
It does not carry over.
And, and if you're, if you have, if you come and apply with the city for a permit to operate a short-term rental, you have to renew it annually.
Annually?
Annually.
The question should be, how many do we have registered today?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would have to check. I think we had two or three right now in the process. Uh, that process again is a permitting process and is not fully closed out and given a permit to the operator until it's been inspected.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce.
This, uh, Juan, this strikes me as a really good first step. Um, the, the, the one and 13 seems a little arbitrary. I'm not sure where that comes from, but I'm wondering if, if more study isn't needed. I, I think.
For what purpose? I, you know, I, I think when we talked to the one, versus the 1/8 of the city of San Antonio, uh, we just basically felt we wanted more space and less.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I, I think that we should approve of what you're proposing, what you guys have approved and recommended to us this evening. But after that, I think we need to study it a little bit more. Like all of these are very good questions that probably need to be addressed. Um, you know, as an architect myself, I would wonder about the impact to a block. Now, we're talking about streets, but what about the whole block? What about the area? Um, and, and at this point, I don't think there's any restrictions on what areas can have the Airbnbs.
Correct.
But I wonder if that's a question that ought to be asked.
You know, and, and you're correct. I mean, this ordinances and public policy is always evolving. Times change, things change, and perhaps things we did not anticipate, uh, need to be adjusted. So will it always be studied? Yes. And if it becomes a problem for some and there's a community output to be able to say, you know what, we're concerned that it's not really doing what it needs to do, so we change and adjust.
Thank you.
It's never in stone.
Mr. Isbrand.
If I can just follow up on Mr. Joyce's comment, um, I, I think the one hesitation I have is that the number 13 seems arbitrary. And does that in any which way expose us to any kind of liability, legal issue at any point in time when every other city has, every other city, that's a sweeping generalization, when other cities like San Antonio have limited it. Um, and I just put that as a statement. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer to that. I think the answer I am looking forward to is not necessarily how many we have registered now, but I think it would be fascinating to know, which we probably can't document, is actually how many are operating now without a permit, have been operating in Castle Hills and we have never known about it, which actually leads me to the question that I'll look to Mr. Rapley on and perhaps Mr. Schnell. If we adopted this tonight, do we have any obligation of public notification, um, on this? And what would that be if we have that obligation?
Mr. Schnell?
Uh, that is an excellent question, Mr. Isbrand. Um, part of the public notification is the fact that this agenda for this meeting has been publicized. The meeting of the zoning commission, um, its agenda was publicized. Both the zoning commission and this council noted on their agenda, there would be public hearing on this issue. The, the wording is clear what the action might be. After an ordinance is adopted, an ordinance of this kind, um, it's, it's optional as to whether or not the city will, would publish the caption of this ordinance. It would be my recommendation to Mr. Rapley that we do publish the caption of this ordinance for, um, uh, in two consecutive issues of the San Antonio Express News, the city's official newspaper, um, to try and maximize the, the legal compliance on, um, publication and also to put it on the website to alert residents and potential, um, short-term rental owners, uh, of this, of this ordinance. One point I would like to, to clarify, and that is that, um, in addition to the, to the short-term rentals that have already been registered, any short-term application, which is, as Mr. Rapley said, in the process of review, that is also protected. Anyone who's, who's existing, um, operating with registration and anyone who has on file as of now, an application, um, is, is protected and is kind of first, um, in relation to, uh, this, this proposal. So those applicants, those applicants and those operators would be protected. As far as folks, Mr. Isbrand, who have been operating, um, without being in compliance with our ordinance, um, there was a lot of discussion at zoning commission meetings and at city council meetings, um, before the, uh, new zoning ordinance was adopted last summer that focused on short-term rentals. There were people who testified at zoning commission public hearings. There may have also been people, I, I can't really recall specifically, but there may have been people who spoke at city council meetings about the, uh, new proposed language, I mean, the zoning ordinance about. I mean, the zoning ordinance about short-term rentals. But I, I do think it's important for the city to get the word out in any way it can, uh, within reason.
You of course have your newsletter also, perhaps a specific article on that. But it is, to me, it's partly a co-compliance issue when you have somebody operating, um, something that is not proper in our area.
Mr. Schnell, does the city have the right, if anytime we feel this has gotten out of control. To cancel the, the right to have an Airbnb in the city?
Under current law, probably, but there are cases, I think, winding their way through the appellate process. That, um, may ultimately control what a city can do. In relation to short-term rentals. There, I believe there is still a case, um, challenging a very, more restrictive ordinance than Castle Hills has. That Austin has, that essentially, uh, would eliminate short-term rentals over a period of time. Um, and that, that ordinance is being challenged in the state court system. But as of now, I'm not aware of any state court decision or state law. That would prohibit a city from saying, no, short-term rentals. That could change. Um, similarly, if the council were to act tonight to adopt the ordinance that's presented. Again, based on the zoning commission recommendation, one every thirteen or one of every thirteen. Single-family or duplex, um, residences, um, the council could come back, um, and revisit that. Again, running it through the zoning commission first and then bringing it back to the council.
Mayor, real quick to answer Councilman Isbrand's question, Ms. Tedford will get this, uh, run twice in the paper, uh, from that standpoint. We have the application online, already on the city website. But we probably need to expand, uh, about information about our short-term rentals and then offer this information if this was adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Rappleyh. Uh, thank you, Mr. Solis for, uh, doing all this work. And thank you, Mr. Rappleyh, for bringing this forward to zoning. Mr. Joyce?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Juan, just one more question, please. On the, on the arbitrary issue of the one and thirteen. How do you, how would you feel and how do you think your commission would feel if we modified that just a touch? And said, we want to make this fifty percent more restrictive than the city of San Antonio, and therefore it will be one and twelve.
Would not be a problem with us. We were, we were enhancing what we thought was there. Twelve to, to thirteen is not a problem.
Okay. It might make the math easier.
It's all about the mathematics because quite honestly, each street is going to have only so many houses. And the division is going to be twelve, thirteen, hey, what's a dozen? It's not a problem.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Joyce. Okay, so we have a motion on the table by, uh, is it Mr. Do we not have a motion? I'm sorry.
I did not show a motion, Mayor.
Would anybody like to present a motion?
Mayor, uh, real quick, back on the question, I think it was mainly Councilman Gregory. But when the permit is finalized, we will issue the CFO based on the final inspection by fire. So that's how we will, again, accept the permit, close it out with the CFO for operating the short-term rental.
Thank you, Mr. Rappleyh. Okay, well, we do not have a motion on the table. Mr. Joyce?
Let me give it a try. My move that we accept the zoning commission's recommendation to limit short-term rentals. With the minor change that rather than one and thirteen. We do fifty percent more restrictive than San Antonio and make it one and twelve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Mayor, does that require a super majority because it's not what came out of the zoning commission?
No, sir. No. You're not, you're not denying the action of the zoning commission. You're modifying it.
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mr. Isbrand. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining?
Mr. Mayor, I've already had on record a, uh, affidavit notarized of recusal.
Thank you, Mr. May. And Mr. Schnell, do we need to vote on a, I guess, the original motion or was the amended okay?
Yeah, Mr. Joyce's motion is the main motion. It was the most main motion, so no, you don't need any further action. Am I correct in saying that the motion was adopted by a vote of three in favor, zero against, and one abstention?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Okay, next up, we have an update on the oak wilt identified in the areas of Carrollwood and La Celsa and possible. Action authorized enforcement of city ordinance. Mr. Rappleyh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you recall, counsel, we've been working through the oak wilt, um. Issue in a certain area, um, back in, you know, August, we had the A and M Forest Service come out and do sort of a broad. Perspective of particularly if there is oak wilt or not. Um, but again, it wasn't a drill down on the properties. You all as counsel modified or the ordinance to put enforcement actions. And so us as staff felt that we needed to engage, uh, an arborist to actually drill down on the individual properties in question. Which could be potentially impacted by, um, oak wilt. So we engaged an arborist to go on to properties, um, uh, I think voluntarily, if, if allowed to meet with the property owner. Um, in your pack, not in your packet, but we provided the, the arborist report. I think it's about two hundred and twenty pages. Some are different. Each property has a different sort of assessment and potential remedy for the situation. As a result of the arborist report, we sent out six letters to the potentially impacted residents on Carrollwood. Um, to let them know, um, the situation. Uh, we've actually heard back from three of them who are taking the steps, I believe, to, uh, remedy the situation, um, based on the reports. Um, Mr. Zamor owns already in contact with another property owner. And, uh, we have not heard back from two of the property owners at this time. But we, we asked, um, the arborist here, uh, from Tree Man Solutions. To give you sort of an overview, uh, of the six properties on Carrollwood in question. And what he did to assess the properties and then give us the, um. Give us the, the tools that we needed to notify these owners of what actions they need to take. Plus, it allows us to take those steps to enforce, um, if not corrected in a certain amount of time based on the ordinance you all adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Rappleyh. Uh, we have Ms. Baker sign up for this agenda item as well. Okay. Um, in that case, Mr. Crowbot will turn it over to you.
How's everybody doing this afternoon, evening?
Doing well, thank you.
You okay?
Yeah, a little bit louder if you can, but we're good.
Okay, yeah, I don't, sorry, I don't have an external microphone, not super geared up for the Zoom meetings, but appreciate your opportunity to, uh, engage with us and Tree Man Solutions. Mr. Justin Probot, I'm a certi, ISA certified arborist, Texas oak wilt qualified, tree risk assessment qualified. Um, been an arborist for ten years and, and working in the San Antonio area. Uh, very familiar with oak wilt and, uh, was engaged, uh, by City of Castle Hills, uh, to do a report on six addresses on Carrollwood. I looked at the six different addresses and did visual inspection of trees that appear to have, uh, oak wilt symptoms. And so, uh, Texas Forest Service did some preliminary, uh, reporting back in August, uh, and kind of looking at their findings. Confirmed their findings, found symptoms, uh, consistent with oak wilt on all properties. And then lots of trees that have already been removed, three property or two properties that have already done a, uh. Fungicide application and then, uh, you know, some of the homeowners that I spoke with were told, you know. I was only able to make contact with a few and actually gain access. Others were just having to observe kind of from the street what I was able to see. But the folks that I did speak with, um, either knew about it already and had treated it or had no idea about oak wilt. Um, didn't even know it existed or, or wasn't even an area. Um, but generally, it appeared that the response was, you know, we want to do something about it and we want to, uh, be compliant is, is the, is the response that I got.
So, um, I don't know, Mr. Mr. Crowbot, if, uh, we don't want to get into particular properties of what houses. But, um, if you want to give a situation of a couple of houses that are sort of, um, pretty drastic with the oak wilt being impacted. And I just wanted to let counsel know, obviously, we felt like we need to engage an arborist. Because obviously, city staff didn't have the expertise. And we needed this sort of ammunition to, uh, enforce oak wilt as you all had requested.
Absolutely. I give you a little, uh, feedback and just overall on the site, I, you know, this is a challenging disease. And I highly recommend having some type of a public information type campaign if, if one hasn't actually been in, in, in place. But, you know, oak wilt is very much present. It's very much spreading. Uh, the main way that oak wilt spreads in those areas is going to be by root grafts and it can spread seventy-five to a hundred feet a year. Um, and so looking at some of these properties, uh, they've had oak wilt, looking at old aerials and tree removal for three or four years. Um, I've found some all the way back, look at maybe twenty sixteen. Um, to where not only the trees have declined slowly over that time, but I mean, there's been dead trees that have been removed for years. Um, and so looking at, uh, containment and, um. You know, creating a public information campaign and spreading as much information, um, about what can be done. Um, and looking at partnering with those, uh, neighbors and with community. Um, I think that that's, you know, maybe in the long-term scope, um, but at least on short-term with, with the folks that I spoke with. You know, they're, they, you do a fungicide application, uh, essentially, and that will reduce the symptoms of oak wilt in an individual tree. Say if it is infected, if it's not too far declined, it can make it appear less dead. But the root grafts from one tree to the next, that roots will actually fuse together and it can move from house to house that way. Um, so it's not necessarily an overland transmission. You'll see that, uh, oak wilt, you know, spread underground. And so the only real way, um, to stop that or to control that spread is to sever those roots. Um, and that's typically accomplished through what's called trenching. Um, you dig a trench, um, by, you know, rock saw forty-eight inches deep. Um, and that serves those root connections in between, um, areas where there's infected trees and there's, uh, uninfected trees. And so looking at, you know, I gave some general recommendations on that area, but, you know, if, if you've got it confirmed in an area. Is going out maybe to the furthest extent where you have it and trying to build some type of quarantine or containment zone. Um, it's just a, you know, kind of a larger scale, uh, recommendation maybe in the long term. But, you know, on, on these lots, uh, that these six specifically, you know, you're looking for direct compliance, they're, uh. You know, some of, it, it, they're all, the trees are dead, uh, they're all gone and it's, uh, it's, it's basically just dead standing trees that, you know, they should be removed. Um, other trees where it just hasn't shown symptoms yet or hasn't spread yet. Um, it just depends on which lot, um, but just put into a detailed report with each individual tree and number it and send that over to our, uh, your leadership team.
Mr. Crowbot, a question for you. Uh, in, in the area that's affected over there on Carrollwood, we have alleys. Would it be wise for us to section off, uh, these homes that are already affected in the alleys? To mitigate the transfer across the alley?
I would say absolutely. I would say that a lot of these, uh, you know, trees, um, they're anywhere that you have a good access point. To where you can sever roots in between and at least contain that between lots. Um, if, if, um, between Carrollwood, it's a Prince Drive. That, that, you know, if you look at that Texas Forest Service map, it's already basically escaped that area. But south of Carrollwood, um, th- those areas, you know, there's not, there weren't any symptoms that I saw from that area. So there may be a potential right there, um, to start doing some of the treatment, um, in some of those areas. So, uh, absolutely, I think along alleyways, uh, streets, uh, property lines, kind of anywhere that is feasible. Um, I mean, it's a messy process. It's a challenge and, um, there's a lot more to it than just, uh, uh, you know, it's more of a utility kind of type work than, than just a, uh. Um, you know, with utility locates and all that with your, with your alleyways, but, um. Little bit to where you're going to need, uh, some, some resources for that to, to coordinate. But I think that, you know, you have an opportunity and I've seen some success, uh, in other, um, neighborhoods. Um, Hollywood Park, I think, has, has done some trenching from a community-wide standpoint, um, with some, some effectiveness. Um, and I think, uh, there's, there's other communities in Texas that I was going to reach out and that we wanted to move forward. And happy to be a resource for your, your team from in the future. But, uh, reach out, see what worked for them, some lessons learned. If that's a, if that's a route that we want to take and start working on recommendations and help you guys, uh, whatever you need to, to, you know. Try to take the next steps to help with containment and suppression in your community.
Thank you, Mr. Crowbot. Do we have any other questions, counsel? Mr. Joyce?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm not sure this is a fair question for you, but do you have any sense of the cost? Of, uh, taking one of these properties and getting rid of the oak wilt and taking the trees out and preventing the spread to neighboring properties?
Well, it's, it's very challenging because the, it's very property-specific. The individual cost is going to be, uh, you know, typically you're going to have several components to that. Like I said, the fungicide, if you're, so you have three kind of main components. You have tree removal where you can just remove the tree and rub it and actually rip the root system out. It's called robbing. Um, you can do that in different ways. I mean, you know, if a homeowner or somebody was, you know, uh, able to, you can, you could cut the tree down yourself. You know, you can just herbicide the tree and actually kill it. Um, there, there are cost-effective ways to do that, but that still leaves you with a dead standing tree. If you, you know, trenching to contain that spread, so severing that root graft between an infected property and an. Uninfected property, um, that's, that's going to be really a very. Um, uh, variable cost depending upon the amount of utilities. Um, you know, are you going along fence lines and property lines? Are you going on public area, private areas? Um, what, you know, there's, there's incredibly variable cost there. Um, and then the actual just tree removal, um, depends a lot upon the size of the tree. And, uh, what I, I, I gave recommendations and I believe that the leadership team had recommended that for all the, uh. Um, the, the, the citizens that they reached out to, but sent them a list of folks that said, hey, here are people that do the fungicide treatments. That do, um, tree removal, that do, you know, trenching and reach out to them and, you know, looking at, you know, if. Maybe they combine things or work together, uh, find ways to, to do maybe a group, you know, type, uh, savings. I'm, I'm personally a consulting arborist, so I don't really have any, um, you know, on the, you know, boots on the ground, tree removal, anything like that. So I, I just would refer that, all that work out to others, but I can tell you that the work is not cheap. It was a very long way, long-winded way of saying, it's not, it's not cheap to fed that tree. It's hard work and it's not going to be something that's, that's, that's an easy. Uh, thing to accomplish. Um, and then just containing oak wilt in and of itself is a, is a very challenging task.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory?
This is from Mr. Schnell. Mark, you may remember about twelve, thirteen years ago, we had this same problem on Prince. And we had an A and M arborist who came out and told that the city would have to do the trenching up and down Prince and that would cost. An enormous amount of money. Well, we didn't do it and it was voted down and I'm glad it was. Does the. Does the city have any legal responsibility if the homeowner is obstinate and said, I don't care, I don't want to do it? And you can't make me. Does the city have any responsibility if it's shown that the only way to stop it? Is for the city to tear up the street to the cost of tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars? Can we then put a lien against the guy's house for that? Or should the city stay out of this? In terms of trenching and things like that? Your things off.
Mr. Schnell, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I was trying not to shuffle papers, so you can't hear me shuffle them. Uh, Mr. Gregory, I think the, the last part of your question is really a policy decision for the governing body. Um, it's also a budget decision for the city staff. But as, as the arborist has said, um. To, to summarize his report on cost, it won't be cheap. The, the answer to your question about a lien is, we don't have an ordinance that allows us to put a lien on someone's property for this. Or a general law. We're a general law city. I would need to find out, I'd need to look into whether we could adopt such an ordinance under a health and safety or, or some other state law authority. What we do have, however, is a local ordinance that was adopted in September of last year that significantly beefed up what the city can do in regard to oak wilt and in regard to a, a property owner who decides for one reason or another to be non-compliant. And that is municipal court. And, and so we have a requirement in our ordinance about what someone is to require to do. And, and then they fail to timely initiate the remediation measures recommended by the state forest service or certified arborist to control and prevent the spread of oak wilt. Our ordinance is a tough ordinance. It does not give people a lot of time. But, but as I think the arborist has, has indicated, this is a problem that if you do not take immediate action when you become aware of it, it's only going to get worse and spread to more properties. The ordinance allows for a penalty of someone who violates these provisions. The penalty is either the general penalty in chapter one of our ordinances, which would be a fine of up to five hundred dollars. But there are certain penalties in the ordinance that would involve a fine of not less than five hundred nor more than a thousand dollars per offense. Each day an offense occurs is a separate offense. So someone would be looking at significant fines from the city if they were out of compliance with our ordinance. The council discussed this ordinance, I think, at two or three meetings and felt that it was important to beef up and strengthen the city's ordinances in regard to getting homeowner compliance with the actions necessary to prevent, reduce, remediate oak wilt.
I'm just wondering because it's been six, at least six months. We've been talking about this and that street gets worse and worse and worse. And apparently you have one person who says, come on, onto my property and let me know what's going on. The other one says, don't you dare come on my property. So that raises the question of if, is it the city's responsibility to find the oak wilt and notify the individual? Or is it just somebody else's, is, whose responsibility is it to start the clock running?
Well, again, each individual property owner were already notified based on the arborist's report. They got their individual report based on their property and what steps they need to do. Our arborists went on the property and identified every tree there and said what needs to be done, basically. So when we sent out these letters, the report went with each individual property from that standpoint. And I know Mr. Crowboth had mentioned some contractors they can use to, to do the work and take those steps to remedy the situation. But, you know, I felt along with staff that it was important that we had an arborist, an expert, tell individual property owners what they need you to address oak wilt, at least for us from an enforcement standpoint.
Have any fines been meted out to anyone?
No, because right now I think the time is almost up on all of the properties based on when the letters were sent out. I can have Mr. Zamiron provide you, he's been in conversation with multiple property owners, but my understanding that two property owners have not complied yet or responded. So in that case, then we will probably take the next steps on those. But the point of bringing this in front of council was that we felt like, again, we needed this expert to tell us what the individual properties had a problem with oak wilt. And as you mentioned Prince, I think we're going to have to have him also address some properties on Prince as well. But most importantly is bringing this in front of council because this could be a costly endeavor. And if we have to appropriate funds, it's going to require either council approval or we put the dollars into the budget and have it adopted for taking those steps if a property owner does not remedy the situation. Mr. Schnoll?
Yeah, I do want to clarify one thing because in taking another look at the ordinance that we adopted, and this I think is very responsive to Mr. Gregory's concern. The ordinance that the council adopted in September states that, that the city declares the spread of oak wilt and oak wilt infestation a nuisance, authorizes the city to remediate untreated or incompletely treated oak wilt or remove a tree with untreated oak wilt and place a lien on the property where the city so remediates untreated or incompletely retreated, retreated oak wilt or removes an untreated tree or trees with oak wilt. So we do have a mechanism to, to place a lien on property. But obviously it's in the city's best financial interest for the property owners themselves to do it because of the, of the, the speed at which it gets done and the fact that the city doesn't have to spend money that might be, take a long time to collect. Because even the city lien is, is going to be difficult to collect. Most of the time liens that cities place on residential property for ordinance non-compliance are only paid off when the property changes hands, when there's a sale transaction and the city's lien or lien affidavit is identified by a title company and the title company won't close the transaction unless that lien is released. And so they will contact the city and get a payoff number. And again, as, as I said earlier, I think it's a real policy decision for the governing body as to, you know, what to do, when to do and how to, where to get the funds to do it. If there's a decision for the city to take action, even with the authority in new section forty-eight dash one oh five of our ordinance.
Question, Mr. Isbrand?
I'm, I'm trying to recall. I, I feel like we're, we're having a lot of the same discussion that we did eight months ago. And I'm stunned that eight months later, we're having the same discussion when we have a critical situation on our hands. And I, I guess I have a couple perhaps disparate questions here, just so I can try to think through this. One is of those individuals who have received a notice who have not responded, has anyone knocked on their door and talked to them about this? How, to what extent are we trying to engage with them beyond just the letter of notification that we've sent?
I'd have to ask Mr. Zamiron because our code officer is the one who's the point of contact in this process for compliance.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've, I've got a little bit of information for you in that respect. I sent out letters to the addresses that we targeted. And first of all, I'd like to start off by saying that, that Mr. Crowbot did an excellent job of his analysis, even when he was not allowed entry into the property. He did a very good job of delineating things very well illustrated as you see on your package. He also validated the state forestry map, which is a very big thing, is very important because we can, we know now that the state forestry does, forestry does have the ability to generalize an area that's impacted or may be impacted in the future based on, on the validity of that map. So to, to answer your question directly, one of those reports came in from Justin. I sent a letter of violation of the new ordinance, the oak wilt ordinance, to each one of those residents. Two of them were already in the process of remediating or actually they spoke to Justin about that. One was already in the process since last year. They were actually doing injections into the tree and you'll see a report that Justin actually saw that. That was already in effect. There is an inference that a fourth resident is in the process because I did get a call from a tree removal service today and they were talking about that they want to kind of partner with us and Justin in the future as, as a provider for tree removal. And he made the inference that this particular property had up to twelve trees that needed to be removed. And if you, if you look at Justin's report, one of the properties actually has fourteen. So we're thinking, I think we're talking about the same property. And that leaves two that are unresponsive. Their deadline was actually yesterday. As per the ordinance that this body passed last year, they were given ten days, they were given seven days. Ten days is kind of the best practice for the courts and everybody else for, for due notification. So to answer your question directly, my code officer has not gone up to the two individuals who have not complied because this has just become apparent in the last twenty-four hours, that we definitely have kind of a negative response from at least two property owners. I can have my officer go over there and attempt to make contact, but, and Mr. Small, Mr. Schnoll can back me up on this. We have to have culpable knowledge delivered to a violator. And the culpable knowledge is in the form of a registered letter and a non-registered letter. And the inference after it leaves this office is that the U.S. Postal Service did their job and they were served. It's basically process of service. So now they have been legally served and this is how they have notification. Going up to the door and letting them know individually is a nicety and it certainly would help. It would be a follow-up, a positive follow-up, but we've met our legal obligations for notification.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. I, I guess what I'm struggling with again is we talked about this eight months ago and we have a couple non-compliant, let's assume they're non-compliant. And, and I know we wanted to wait for the arborist's report on all this, but that didn't prevent us at any point in time from going and talking to the community of starting to engage with everybody. And if this is truly a urgent situation and now we're talking about perhaps we need to look at Prince, Prince too, it's a situation that's only getting worse and it feels like we have not been as expeditious as perhaps we could have been. And I don't mean that judgmentally. I'm just trying to understand what the process is here and how we go on. Likewise, I remember when we had this discussion eight months ago and it's part of the conversation tonight. It's about, our conversation always goes back to, if you will, punishment. We're going to punish people. And I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt to most people that especially after all we've learned over the past week about how much it costs to remove trees and things when they fall over, much less have oak wilt in them, that somebody is, has to absorb a significant expense for this. Do we understand the circumstances of why these residents are or are not taking action? Two, I think is important, but if we're not talking to them, we're not going to be able to understand how to bring them along so that the city doesn't have to incur these expenses. And I think the, the other point that Mr. Crowbot mentioned is critically important here, which is education and information. And again, we've had eight months since that ordinance went into effect. What are we doing to help the city of Castle Hills, not just Carrollwood or Prince, to understand how serious a threat this is and how important it is to take action on it? I wish that I'd had the time before tonight's meeting to actually go and do a little research and see what other suburban cities may have encountered these kinds of issues before and what we might learn from them. But I, I, I think what, I, I don't have any solution or any answer tonight. I'm just concerned that it's taking a real long time and, you know, something needs to be done. But if we're not even knocking on a door to say, hey, do you know what's going on out here and how impactful that is, then I don't think we're maximizing resources the way we should to try to address this. And I really do believe this is a urgent issue for this city to, to address.
Mr. Isbrand, I completely agree with you. I think at this point, we're kind of in infancy of this ordinance and this is the first time it's going to be acted on. And it's important that we go out and let people know instead of coming down with fines and punishment, as you said, and Mr. Gregory had brought it forward and suggested the whole lien. I thought that was a little bit strong, to say the least, that somebody would lose their house because of inaction on their yard. Not to say that it shouldn't be addressed, but the last thing that I think the city should do is take away somebody's house or put a lien on it and put that kind of a burden. But I, I do agree that we should move forward with some kind of action as we had planned, as we approved. And I'd hope that we could do it in a community-driven manner so that we can show people why we're doing it and they can understand the severity themselves. Mr. May?
I, I think it's pertinent to note that several weeks ago, one of the residents that's impacted in this study reached out to me and they had already engaged in remediation, which I, of course, encouraged. I think that's, that's important. But the other thing I extroverted was my own personal thought, which is that I do want to work collaboratively. And one of the incentives that we might be able to offer is tree replacement. And I realize we're just at the beginning of the budget workshop period, but I'd like to have a marker, a little flag on that so that in addition to the compliance and I'm going to just put it out there, I think we need to do exactly what Councilman Isbrand has suggested, which is we need to be very serious and purposeful about starting the clock in motion. Thank you for your efforts already, but we need to bear down on this. But I want to look for potential funding source for tree replacement. I think that could be a game changer in a collaborative way, possibly.
Mr. Gregory?
One thing the past council did do is that we did say that if somebody came to us and they wanted to buy the chemicals to inject into the roots of the tree, the city would buy that and they would buy it from the city, saving them the sales tax. And a few people took advantage of that. But one thing was significant. If this thing gets loose over in the Fox Hall area, you're talking about Armageddon because there are jillions of trees over there and it could spread very quickly before anybody knows what's going on. And I think you have to have, the responsibility has to be on the homeowner because the, the city can't start absorbing this person, but not that person. You either absorb everything or you absorb nothing. You can't pick and choose winners. And it was understood, especially at that time, I think there were, I think there was one person who lived in the Fox Hall area, but there are thousands of trees over there. And if that swept through that area, it would decimate it. So it's, it's a very critical thing, but you have to make it, it has to be a situation that the homeowner is proactively alert to see what's going on with what they own. They just can't sit back and say, the city will take care of it. The city will absorb this. You know, it has to be the responsibility of the homeowner.
And Mr. Gregory, I agree with that completely. I think the, the one thing that leaves me wanting more is the need to understand the circumstances and situations with each homeowner. You know, are they passively or actively ignoring us? Are they incapable of being able to financially address the situation? Are they truly not aware of the situation and haven't had an effective conversation with the city? So like any war, you wage battles on many fronts. And I think that we're in a war here and need to now look at this on where do, where are our fronts going up that we have these battles to try to address this in as many ways as possible.
Mayor, real quick, I think what in Mr. Isbrand, as far as Mr. Zamiron was explaining, that next would be the, the folks who have not reached out to us at all. And we can have our code officer visit them in the meantime, but I think as far as the process, sending out those certified letters. And I think that would trigger, if they didn't respond at all, as far as the certified letters, then, then you're start, then we're, then we're going to court.
That, that's a catch twenty-two that I would like to address now that I have the moment, that Mr. Schnoll brought up and also that I have done when I was the code officer. I have actually placed liens on properties, but there's a catch. There's, there's a catch that too, that Mr. Schnoll is, I'm sure, aware of. You can't lien a homestead. You can't, if someone is claiming a homestead exemption, you can't lien them. So how do we, how do we go to collect any type of remediation that we do as a city? But to answer, Mr., or to address Mr. Mr. Rapley's comment, those letters go out. That's, that's, that's the code. That's what my code officer does, what I did when I was code officer. The next step is to get the solution because now we no longer have voluntary compliance. Now we have to have compuls, because a little bit of compulsion in compliance. So how do we do that? Well, the mechanism is to bring them to court to abate the situation. We have situations in the city where there's grass that's growing completely out of control from a couple of property owners, maybe perhaps on commercial properties, I'll just leave it vague, that don't understand and they are getting abated on a regular basis. They're getting charged. They're disreg- They're getting charged, they're disregarding the charge and are getting leamed. And I'm the one putting the liens on those properties. We don't, from what this council says, and I'm actually in agreement, that it's kind of a little bit excessive to be going to a house that you may not even be able to lien anyway legally if it's a homestead and tell them, well now you owe us $20,000 because you got a dozen trees to remove. So this is the conundrum that I want to kind of express to you as a council. How do we get compliance if there's not voluntary compliance? If I send my code officer out tomorrow to check those three houses and one of them is actually in conversations with removal, any other two don't answer the door or tell my code officer, can't do it, sorry, can't afford it. What do we do? That's the conundrum of code compliance and it always is, whether it's oak wilt, whether it's grass. What do we do? Do we go forward and do that? That's, that's your decision and I'm out of it, but I'm telling you that we've done our role in notification and we will do our role moving forward however this body sees fit. But that's the conundrum. What, it's a conundrum for you to consider, what do you do to get that compliance if it's not voluntary?
Mr. Schnall, a quick question. I thought in Texas you could lien a property that just doesn't affect them if it's a homestead until they sell it. And you're muted, sir.
Mayor, that's partially correct. The lien on a homestead is hard to enforce, but it is done on a regular basis by cities on homesteads. Some of them get paid anyway when there's a closing, others don't. The homestead is exempt from certain kinds of liens, but the proceeds of a homestead lose that exemption after six months if they're not reinvested in a homestead. Most people find a way to avoid that, but it's not entirely possible to avoid it in some situations. But it, I think what I'm hearing from my perspective, and I agree with the comments that Mr. Isbrand and Mr. May made, that we ought to try every other possible way of getting voluntary compliance, but we also need to have the, the other things in our disposal to try and incentivize people to comply. But I do think it's important to try and make personal contact, whether our ordinance requires it or not, in the interest of maximizing the chance that the property owners will be responsive. The notices that went out, I thought included a copy of our ordinance, so no one should be surprised if there is further enforcement. If we want to try and stop the spread of oak wilt, we have to deal with it directly.
Mr. Joyce?
I think that both the homeowner and the city should cooperate in fixing the problem. Castle Hills, what we're known for is trees. On that survey we did a few months back, the number one answer, the number one thing people liked about Castle Hills was the trees, the country feel and all that, all that stuff. So we have a stake in that. It's not just, we just can't put it all on the property owner, as Mr. Zemron said, what if somebody doesn't have the money? These are $10,000 or $15,000 things, it seems to me. And perhaps there are grants that might be available to help, but I think we need to find a way to partner with those folks who that happens to and find some funding source to be able to help out. And I respect Mr. Gregory's point about can you pick winners and losers or, well, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that question is. But there, we need to come up with some fair way to, to help with the issue when this oak wilt is discovered.
Mr. Gregory?
In case the council doesn't know it, we have a rule on the books right now with regard to hooking up for a sanitary sewer. If the house changes property and you're within a certain amount of feet of sanitary sewer, you must hook up. In the past, one person inherited their family home, he had to hook up and he was forced to hook up. In the past, we've had somebody bought a large property and he basically told the city they could go jump in the lake. He ended up having to pay tens of thousands of dollars to the city for not hooking up. I'm not even sure he's hooked up today. So we have ordinances out there with regard to things of where we force people to do things that cost them a lot of money. And that is one thing that if you, or the end of a block or near a sewer system and you're on septic, you are forced to, at your own expense, to hook up to the sewer system. So, and that's been enforced as long as I can ever recall. People have had to come up with the money and that's that. But this is a much more serious thing. We don't have a, we don't have the depth of money to where we can save everybody from oak wilt. We just don't have it. We're spending $18,000 on this and that program. At the same time, we're trying to fix the infrastructure. So it's a, it's a real, we've only got so much money. And this is a tough decision. I know one house that had oak wilt on it, I think it was at the end of Prince, or next to the end of Prince, they chopped down the oak wilt trees and they planted new trees, period, to stay in compliance. And that couple, if it's memory serves me correctly, at that time, they were in their 80s. They're dead now, I mean, this was 20 years ago, but their solution, they chopped down the trees and they planted new trees. So we've got to be very careful when we, if we ever start setting precedent of, well, we'll do this for this one, but we won't for that one. You're opening the floodgates of where the city has got, we'll do this and to everything. Say somebody can't pay a speeding ticket or they're in the hospital, I mean, you can go on and on, the Internal Revenue doesn't care, they'll slap 8% fine on you if you don't pay in time. That's that regardless of the situation. So it's a, it sounds good, but the reality is the decisions in this city only has so much money to address them. And this oak wilt could be an absolute tar baby of a problem. It could, it could just cause so much destruction, it's unbelievable. So anyway, go, go check out that ordinance about hooking up to the sanitary sewer, it may surprise you. So I think we've threshed it.
Mr. Rapley?
Okay, Mayor, what I would suggest and to Mr. Isbrand's point, that we can look at sort of what other cities do. And I know, I know a city currently that is using the tree permit revenue to fund and assist residents in the situation, but I understand one property wiped out that fund. So I can look in the budget process, how we can develop a fund that's dedicated to assist and partnering with residents in this case. Moving forward, I think that's the part we need to look at, what maybe what other cities have done, how they partner to assist. We're going to take the steps, if non-compliance is the case, we're going to take those steps to enforce the ordinance moving forward. We can also start with notifying folks on Prince based on the Texas A&amp;M report as well. Not necessarily saying we'd engage Mr. Crowbot at this time, but we could start the process to engage folks. And at some point, if we need to put money into the budget, again, to obtain his services for the properties on Prince, we will do that. But right now, we need to focus on the ones who've not responded and take those next steps. And the reason why we styled this agenda this way is to have council take that sort of action to allow staff to move this forward and enforce the ordinance in place.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. There is a noted, no action on this item?
There is action to enforce the ordinance, but I would say if we do engage, say Mr. Zemron receives a response from a property on Carrollwood who says, I'm not complying, I don't have the funds, I'm not doing anything, then we will engage Mr. Crowbot again about the steps we need to have and contact a contractor to go in and do this work, but if it's a costly measure, it will be coming back to council based on the funds that would need to be utilized.
So I think you have the mechanisms in place to do what you got to do so far, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
I'm confused a bit. If we've passed an ordinance saying this is what you need to comply with or we'll do this, why do we need to sit here and authorize us to enforce the ordinance that we passed saying either you comply or we'll do this? I thought we already, we're down this road.
I guess in a sense to take those steps, but I defer to Mr. Schnall as far as if that is necessary. I think if there's again, something that needs to be brought in front of council as far as the funds or other measures, then we'll bring it back for action.
I think this item was designed to be just an update on the status.
I think again, to Mr. Isbrand's point, I know it seems like a long time in between, but Mr. Zemron took the time to find an arboretum. And like I agree with Mr. Zemron, he did a very good job, very detailed job of all these properties because I think we needed to drill, drill down. I think we need that assessment. I think we need to tell those property owners, hey, you need to do this to address this oak wilt. But moving forward, if they don't comply, we'll take the necessary steps as enacted by the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Next we have item 6.6, update and discussion on the policy procedures and certain terms within chapter 36 related to the sanitation collection services conducted by Public Works. Mr. Crowbot, if you're still on, thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to being a future resources for City Castle Hills and just want to commend you all. I 100% agree, Castle Hills is a unique place because of the oaks and want to support and help you guys in your endeavor to try to control oak wilt is a valiant effort and it's going to be challenging and I think that with community engagement, it's possible. And really just want to commend you and thank you for the involvement.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Originally, we had this on our June agenda and the idea was to have a discussion with y'all in regards to the policy procedures within our sanitation collection services and especially the language in chapter 36. So obviously we want to bring some points to you that we would like to see as far as potential changes in chapter 36. Ideally, we were going to do the presentation last council meeting and bring back those proposed changes. So now we will bring those back in July for y'all. I just want to start out by saying, obviously, as you know, we have a unique sanitation service. You know, our Public Works team provides, you know, a special care with residents. You know, we still have the guys on back of trucks, have a devoted customer service mentality, our team does in Public Works. And this service is part of the reason why, you know, people move to Castle Hills. The cost for this service is very low comparative to other cities. But as I mentioned to you previously, Council, this is something that the cost of service should be reviewed every five years and at some point, probably in the budget process, we're going to have to have a greater conversation of that as well. One of the things I'd like to mention, you know, Mr. Hatta has been here for 40 years, you know, I'm just kidding, Rick, about 25 years. And, and Rick, Rick has endured, endured 10 to 12 city managers. And during that time, he's had a different city manager tell him, well, we need to do this, we need to do this, and has been Rick moving in different parts and still holding on to what Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so had told him what to do, you know, from that standpoint. But the problem is, we don't have anything on paper to enforce from that standpoint. He's had that administrative charge, but again, he's had multiple city managers in place. So the goal here is to standardize these guidelines, no matter whose city manager moving forward from that standpoint. Quick overview, our collection services, additional areas of service we want to touch on. Sanitation collection, obviously, as you know, garbage twice a week, leaf brush once a week, recycling once a week. Obviously, we can get into the personnel staffing, levels of customer service. And as you know, this is a pretty labor-intensive position, you know? We've had to deal with workers' comp injuries, increasing the liability, we've had turnover and we need to look at how we become more competitive for those wages, especially in our labor position. We'll get into that next one. Our goal here, and this agenda item, is to bring awareness to cities' collection services and discuss some areas of concerns for our Public Works Department related sanitation. Those areas of concern are curbside collection, recycling, size of containers. I'd like to point out too additionally, you know, our Public Works is very comprehensive. It's not just about collecting garbage, you know? They do right-of-way cleanup, they do abatement, street work, graffiti drainage, cleanup, animal services, construction, maintenance and many other projects that go unseen in this community. As part of this process, staff would like to clarify some concerns and continue to educate administratively and put the pieces in place, again, standardized guidelines to enforce violations in chapter 36. Staff would also like to move forward with clarification of terms, definition, language changes in chapter 36 under solid waste. What I want to touch on real quick, the personnel staffing, you know, Rick currently has three collectors, two drivers, has three open positions to maintain the level of customer service that we have right now. One of the things I was going to mention, and we've already taken action on the administrative assistant position was, and I think Mr. Isbrand pointed out, that when you call and have a concern in Public Works, no one is there to pick up the phone because Rick and his guys are out all day. I think that extremely is something that is not in, in line with what we like with customer service. So that was going to be part of my presentation, but we took action on that to get Rick some assistance in that area. You know, the labor, the labor-intensive position, you know, it's a hard job, you know, these containers, bag leaves are heavy. Recently, we've had employees, like I mentioned, on workers' comp. This encourages liability to the city. We had two currently on workers' comp. And recently, Rick lost a very good employee of 10 years who also helped drive our sanitation trucks we lost to another city. Again, as part of this, we need to ensure we are offering competitive wages. Our collector labor position is actually below $15 an hour. We need to revisit this particular wage to make it more competitive and attractive in this section. What I want to touch on here is recently, we had an increase of service concerns with collections or missed pickups during scheduled days. The city had to deal with the aftermath and abundance of dead vegetation from winter storm Uri and what, and excuse me, as well as our currently reduced staffing levels in Public Works. This was a perfect storm for us. Our Public Works crews had to work through the day to meet collection needs. And again, this hampered or prohibited our Public Works crews from addressing other projects in and around the city. You know, Rick will tell you the day in life of Public Works is to collect garbage, recycle and brush in the mornings and knock out all other projects during the day. And that is sort of not happening right now due to the staffing level. And at that time, I think as city staff, we took the, we took the, the need to help Rick and our Public Works by getting the dumpsters as indicated in the picture here. We arranged for dumpsters, which has been staged at City Hall for over 30, 45 days. This has been very beneficial to our Public Works crew as some residents exceeded the tin bag leaves brush due to dead foliage. The series of dumpsters at City Hall over this time has collected nearly 13 tons of brush, bag leaves. This has not clued the two dumpsters from this past week to assist with the recent storm, which resulted in downed trees throughout the community. In part, I think this was very helpful to our crews to have and allow residents to come and dump in the dumpsters based on the bag leaves and foliage because this alleviated the time, you know, in some ways, in general, because Rick would have been taking that to the landfill anyways and it would probably have been a larger cost based to the overall Current placement of containers, we'll start, this is one of the sections we want to talk about curbside service. Current placement- curbside service. Current placement of containers relative to curbside is ambiguous and has led to several instances where citizens were upset that items placed at a distance from the curb area has not been collected. We ask residents that containers, bags, recycles be within three feet of the curb. Need, and again, this is another part we need to include language in chapter 36 because I think this goes back to Mr. Harada having different administrative, different city managers who said it needs to be X, Y, or Z, and it's never been consistent language in chapter 36 and standardized, I guess you'd say, for enforcement in this this manner. So I think those are a couple of things that's sort of frustrated Mr. Harada and our public works team, the inconsistent of what you're supposed to do when you put something curbside. The recycle service, utilize single stream recycle. The city Castle Hills has an efficient, highly inclusive recycling program. We recycle our items through waste management, which means that we recycle the same items as surrounding neighborhoods of San Antonio. Citizens may not be aware that when depositing recycles to the facility, the city is credited with 100% of those recyclables allowance. And when unrecyclable materials are detected, that 100% gets subtracted from the city and the fee for the 100% allowable material is credit the cargo is. So basically, we don't get any credit for the plastic material. So you could have bagged your recycles, but when Rick and his crews take it to the landfill, they count it as just total tonnage and we're not getting any credit because they're in plastic bags. Right here is the shows and indicates what you can or can't recycle. We've actually moved this to the to the portion of the website that when you click on our website, this immediately comes up. So residents can see exactly what can or can't be recycled. And in our chapter 36, we have no language that that references recycle as well. Size of the container, again, going back to chapter 36, there's ambiguous language in there about the size of allowable containers, very specific instances, but not at all in other instances, creates confusion for our citizens. Household garbage must be bagged and placed in 32-gallon containers with the lid. We ask resident collections to be limited to the equivalent of these three 32-gallon sized containers per household. We ask residents that each container may not be more than the 32 gallons and 40 pounds in weight, including contents. Due to the fact the garbage collection is done manually and overweight containers can result in injuries to our public works crew. On collection day, containers set out in the alley are on the street, so it's easily accessible through the collector. After collection, garbage containers should be placed or stored in the alley, abutting the property in orderly manner or as to not block the alley. Again, we need specific language to this in chapter 36. I think this goes back again to what Rick has been being told what needs to happen over the years as far as these guidelines to work through for our collectors. I want to talk real quick about next steps. You know, we've we've sent out material to residents about size of containers. We've sent out holiday schedules, but as we move forward, and I think whatever language that council wants to adopt as far as chapter 36, we will send out additional materials and mail out, social media, and put on the city website exactly what these standardized guidelines are moving forward. Let me put here, further clarification, again, chapter 36, recycling, changes to personnel. This is something I spoke to Mr. Harada about changes in personnel. Right now, since he had a gentleman leave after 10 years of service, we've talked about identifying that position as a crew leader for Mr. Harada. So we're working on the job description to be able to post to get him some help in that manner. The other part of that personnel was getting him an administrative assistant to assist in the office. Future evaluation of services, public versus private, collection of sanitation, including further examination on the rate specifically of revenue versus costs, including further rate discussion with you all as council. Feasibility of additional dumpsters in the fall for brush, leaf collection. Explore the idea of having a dumpster for brush bulk collection twice a year, maybe fall and spring. I know as I mentioned with y'all as council, the sanitation rate for services should have been reviewed years ago. We requested a small increase last year in the budget. If you recall the proposed budget discussion, we needed $2 increase and we adopted 50 cents. We will need to build back a $1.50 increase into this year's proposed budget to be in line with the cost of service. Moving forward, I think we will need to review comprehensively the service to discuss either a contractor or continuing with municipalized services and/or a possible combination of both. We will be looking at what other cities are doing and how much they are paying for services. Again, bringing back the language for y'all to consider changes in chapter 36 based on these three areas of concern. At this point, I would ask Mr. Harada to answer any questions specifically on operations because he's the one out there day to day dealing with with our public works team. Counsel, do you have any questions specifically for me or Mr. Harada?
I have one, but I don't know which, to whom to address it. So I'll just to both of you. Mr. Rappley, you said that our collector wage is $15 an hour. What?
Actually, it's below $15.
It's below $15 an hour. What do comparable cities, what's their, what's their wage? If you're losing employees, Mr. Harada, and they're going up the highway here for better pay, how do we compare with others?
Well, I'm going to tell you, trying to, I guess what what I was going, when I had that employee leave, I was down at the landfill and, you know, talking with some of the collectors and they were telling me as to what the wages that we pay, they're getting paid more, 15 and up. And I was like, what? And I was like, yeah, even their drivers. And I was like, well, that's the reason why I'm over here trying to ask these people, how can I get, you know, somebody come and, you know, start helping and working with the Castle Hills. But they're like telling me, he's like, nobody's going to come work for that wage, you know, that's just too low for the labor type work. And I was like, yep, we're going to have to go ahead and re- bring the whole scale because it's never going to bring in labors for the kind of work that they do out there. Never.
I think councilman, the idea is again, looking at similar positions at other cities to be competitive and attractive. Part of that is looking at other cities who were still having, who are still municipalized, still having guys on back of trucks to make sure what that competitive wage looks like. I don't think, and Mr. Harada can speak to that, I probably don't think that the wages for his public works team and/or Mr. Harada has probably been looked at at years.
Well, and I think it would be invaluable to us as we go into the budget process, as you've done with other positions here, for us to have something to compare it to so that we can fully understand the impact that it's having on your ability to recruit and retain employees.
I'd like to mention that, Mr. Rappley mentioned, okay, we're out there on the field. And as you mentioned, we're being held back because of these different types of concerns that's going through with the freeze and also to these storms and all that. So, you know, as he mentioned, we're out there in the field that asked extra left, left over the day. Okay. So when we talk about wages, you're just talking about the wages of labor as a sanitation worker. But my men, they're multitask. They're, they're not just picking up trash. They're not just trashmen. They're out there cutting, weed eating, I mean, cleaning drainages, as Mr. Rappley said, construction, we have off and on abatements. I mean, all this has to go through where these, these labors are not just trashmen. They're just like, that's all they think of. Everybody says, okay, that's just a trashman. No, these guys are over there too. We're changing oil. We're working on the trucks. I mean, anything and everything that we can do to, with our department to make sure it's managing what has to be done because we're not having to send out a vehicle to go get work. Oh, well, you know, we're down. Guess what? We don't have a truck. Guess what? Get the trailer. We're going to pick up anything and everything. As, I don't know if you've seen, council members have been here several years, you've seen some of the videos that I have the backyard filled with two routes of trash because I only have one trash truck to take all that trash over. So then I got my collectors not just picking up trash and the regular collection. We got them picking up on the trailer with a 350-ton truck and bringing it all to the yard and then we have to load it into one truck. I mean, this is what the manpower that y'all have.
And I think even the question comes if, say tomorrow, we we had to contract with, I don't know, I'll just throw out Republic or one of those, we would still need a public works department and staffing based on all the things they do here in the community, you know. So I don't think that's necessarily in question for y'all to consider. I think comprehensive, we need to just look down the road if we're going to continue to do a municipalization or go private at some point because again, when Rick was fully staffed in my time here, they were knocking out collection by 10:00 in the morning and then working all other type of projects. I've done what I can to help Mr. Harada because I think that's been very beneficial to have those dumpsters there. I think that's alleviated a lot of 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 time, labor and cost of tonnage to the landfill for our particular sanitation fund in general.
As you mentioned, no matter what, those are worth there. As you all look on the websites, we have surcharges. These residents call me and say, hey, Rick, how much do you charge them for that? I think they're going to have $300, $400 sometimes. But yes, it's true that this way the resident is bringing their own brush and foliage over here. I mean, that's a big help. And as I heard just right now, I didn't know he was going to continue it. That would be great to go throughout the whole year and those special seasons because we have it twice a year. I mean, just tonnages and you look at the pictures, some of these bags that have to be with the verbiage on there, it has to be revised to the 30, 30-gallon trash, trash bag. Because we got people who are bringing out trash bags this high. I mean, and they're telling, hey, you said you're supposed to get 10. Well, 10 is a whole different, like almost two and a half and got one bag.
I know you're looking at me, Rick. Once you told me, I didn't do it again.
Well, again.
And I would need several times when we first started as council member to go and see what the bags that we pick up for surcharges. And I picked it up and see what's there because we charge a dollar, you know, $1.25. And depending on what it is, I have to assess it because then we get these people saying, well, the more that we put in the bag, the less bags that we got in here. Well, no, that's not going to happen. Yeah, I'm going to check the way the bags to make sure that we're not taking it. We're having a deficit at picking up that, maintaining somebody's property. But he was with us. He's out there on the garbage truck checking it out, see what was going on. But that's what I'm trying to say is that we got to go out there and make sure we're not falling into that deficit to maintain and then have our city or our budget fall down.
And again, counsel, I think, you know, based on our current staffing levels and, you know, we're hoping here Rick can hire a few guys, maybe get the crew leader position. He's been trying to get guys and trying to recruit them for the position. He actually hired one gentleman and he left after a week who had all the sort of experience, project managements, and he worked for another entity. So he went out for a week and said, this is too much, which really kind of irritated me because I know Rick was looking forward to this gentleman coming aboard for that additional help. What I can do is again, try to work to help Mr. Harada and our public works team is I'm working to get a contractor out for mowing. I'm hoping to move the line item up in the budget to to get contracted work to do more right-of-way and cleanup. So it's less that Rick is dedicating to that. But, you know, I could tell you something about Rick is, you know, at 2:33 today, he was on the route and I asked him, you know, point blank, can you get out here and just mow the grass before council tonight? And it was done at 5:05. I mean, just done. So I appreciate that, Rick. But my, my point of tonight was to bring your attention to three areas of concern. We will bring back that revised language for y'all to consider if that's something you want to implement and make those changes in chapter 36. So again, our code officer has those enforceable measures in place with residents who are not complying on the sanitation side.
Mr. Rappley, I think I could speak for the rest of council, but I would ask you to look at whatever it needs to get Mr. Harada the support that he needs. It's one thing to stretch him thin and then his team and then the residents are not getting the level of customer service or the level of service, I should say, that they're expecting. So it's a failure all the way around. And in my opinion, I just don't think that's acceptable. And I would implore you to figure out what we can do and change that as soon as possible.
And Mayor, if I could make one other comment, I appreciate it in your presentation, Mr. Rappley, that you also had the word education there, educating people because we can revise chapter 36 and it won't mean a thing if people don't know what they're supposed to do. And I truly believe that most people in the city aren't going, let's see how big a bag we can get out there and get them the hallway. They don't know the difference. And our ability to communicate consistently, not once and done, one and done, but consistently, I think will also help a lot too in in dealing with these kinds of issues without having to look at a enforcement mechanism, but simply a willing compliance. Mr. Harada, there isn't anyone I ever talked to any day or anytime I post anything on social media where I mentioned public works or your name and I don't, and I'm not overwhelmed with people who sing y'all's praises. And I hope that when you have all these other challenges and everything else going on, that you will remember just how much you all are valued and appreciated in this community. From my point of view, you are ambassadors for all of us and I'm really grateful for everything you do. And I hope that we can look comprehensively at the things we can do, whether it's staffing, revision of the code, communication and education to make sure that you have the ability to do your job at a highly professional level and with a great deal of respect and appreciation from our community.
Mr. Joyce?
Quick comment. I hope that you guys in talking about different positions and wages are going to recommend to us what a new wage scale might mean, maybe as part of the budget process. That probably would be really helpful. And then just a quick comment to follow up on Councilman Isbrand's education comment. I thought that that flyer you guys put out a week or two ago on the code compliance was really very effective. And it might be a vehicle to help people understand, you know, the trash can container size and maybe even something like oak wilt. Maybe some of that, you know, concerns and regulations about oak wilt.
I think when we sent out the holiday schedule, I think we had an illustration about the size of containers. But again, all we can put on there is that we request residents to utilize that. But if we get it in, in, get the changes in chapter 36 and it's enforceable, we'll definitely send out some other mailers really letting residents know what has transpired and what the standardized guidelines. I say standardized guidelines is because again, there's been so many directions to Mr. Harada on sanitation collection over the years. So I think really getting those standardized guidelines and having him knowing what he needs to do and what we need to do to enforce really helps him and his guys out there.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Mr. Harada. You know, we appreciate you. Next up, we have 6.7, discussion of possible action to accept the FY 2022 budget calendar. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just to accept, as we go through this, I'll just, the calendar is is in the packet that talks about, as you recall from last year, we'll have a number of workshops, starting out with preliminary reviews, sort of goals and objectives by council, having the departments. And Thursday, August 5th, submitting the proposed budgets and then taking the steps with the public hearings and eventual adoption. So this is similar to the calendar we laid out last year. There was approved by council and we pretty much follow the same path. We just want to make sure that you all as council have these dates moving forward. So you can put them on your calendars.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And I'm assuming this calendar gives you enough time at the end for any kind of situations like we've experienced in the past?
Well, I think last year went pretty smooth, but in years past, yes, Mayor, I think it does as well. You look at a special city council meeting to have the budget public hearing and then the following week to adopt. So I give still a couple of weeks in August if necessary. I mean, in September to approve the budget, but hopefully we won't have similar issues than the past.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion to accept the calendar?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr. May. All in favor? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Lastly, we have announcements by Mayor and council members, Mr. Isbrand.
I am so looking forward to June nineteenth. Not only does Castle Hills always put on an amazing Fiesta celebration, but if there was ever a time that we needed one, it's this year, and I really appreciate all the volunteers, Ms. McClellan, and the many others who have put so much into making sure that this is going to be an extraordinary Fiesta Castle Hills. Look forward to seeing y'all on the nineteenth out there.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. May.
Ditto, and Judy Crawford is just the best. She's got a great program plan, so I'll see you all out there on the nineteenth.
Mr. Joyce?
Oh, good, thank you.
Mr. Gregory? Okay, I just want to add the, tagging on Mr. Isbrand's comments, that the Fiesta's going to be pretty good, we're going to have a whole slew of Fiesta royalty, partially because they don't have anywhere else to go, but we will be one of the only street parades, I think, in the entire city, so if we are ever going to have a great Fiesta, which we always do, I think this one's going to be one for the record books, hopefully. I think they were even talking about having vaccinations available there to make it convenient. Before I get to you, Mr. May, I think we had a lady that would like to speak, she's a little bit labor citizen, as we heard, but you're here and you waited throughout the whole thing, so I think we can give you a little bit of latitude.
Thank you. I was watching online and couldn't figure out how to make a presentation online, and I will try to figure that out. My name is Norma Cantu, and I've been a resident of Castle Hills since nineteen ninety-two, I'm on Twin Leaf, and I'm in the Fiesta mood, I do have my Fiesta medal from the Fiesta Queen already, so you can't have that, but this one's mine. I want to celebrate my good news with all of you, because I was contacted by the White House to serve on the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, and that is an independent bipartisan body that has as its mission to strengthen and enhance and protect the civil rights of all Americans. And it's been around since nineteen fifty-seven, it was set up by President Eisenhower, and it preceded a lot of the civil rights bills that came about in the nineteen sixties. In fact, there were hearings in San Antonio fifty-five years ago on a variety of civil rights matters, and that information was used by Congress to pass the civil rights bills that protect our rights to vote and education and speech and everything else that the federal laws do for us. To my deep, deep honor, I was selected unanimously as chair of the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. So your neighbor is not moving to DC, because it's not considered a full-time gig, but your neighbor wants to listen to what you want, and then I'm going to extend an invitation to you all. We have state advisory committees, fifty of them, obviously, and we've recently added the territories. The term of someone who serves on the state advisory committee is four years, and some people enjoy it so much that they re-up, but we have term limits, which means that after twelve years, they've got to get off. So we have openings for new people to volunteer and serve, can be Republican, can be Democrat, we want both represented, and these openings are not paid positions, but they're so good that people are sticking around for twelve years to do them, so obviously, they're really, you know, a plum. And so I'm letting you all know personally that I'm encouraging applications, self-nominations, I'm encouraging you to talk to your friends and say, hey, do you know someone that should serve on the Texas Advisory Committee? The smaller states get like about eleven members, the larger states get close to twenty, we're one of the larger states. So we have openings in Texas, Louisiana, and New Mexico. So if you know someone who would like to volunteer and be involved, this is the time for people to be involved. We've had a tough year, we've had a lot of civil rights issues in the last year, and this is a year where you can do something to make everything better. And so if you don't personally want to volunteer, if you know someone, please, 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 the application is online, easy to find, it's on the website for the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, so it's www.usccr, that stands for U.S. Commission on Civil Rights.gov. You're looking for the state advisory, so you click on the little box at the top that says advisory committee, there will be another box that follows that that says app.